How the council meeting in order, first order of business would be the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our September seventeenth council meeting. Second month, we're starting at six o'clock, so we're up here and in.
Mr. Mayor, I want to amend the agenda for tonight. Under Public Works and Engineering, I'm going to put item B, approval grant, purchase of a new pedestrian safety light. And then under Administration, number H, will we discuss my city council term.
With a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mike Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
David will be aye. We will move on to the consent agenda, which includes our August twentieth regular council meeting minutes. September fourth, twenty twenty four, special council meeting minutes, a request to use city parking lot for fundraiser, a request to use trailhead park for luminary walk, a request to consume alcohol on public property, a request to approve Brandon Burtzner to the E D A board, resolution twenty four thirty four, accepting monthly donations, and a request to approve the homecoming parade rubber.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. City has been able to work with this school on getting the free road around fifty go. That one.
Yes, correct. I've been in contact with our principal and Pin Island S R O.
And I'd like to publicly thank as well, we've had a couple of donations, a notable one was from the Lions Club, putting on five thousand dollars towards the parks. So I wanted to publicly thank her for that. That was a tremendous gift, so thank you. We have motion second. Any other discussion? Mike Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David will be aye. Tell what input, do we have anything to written?
I have not received any written correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Jump right into administration. The potatoes here, request to approve the Goodyear County Sheriff's Office policing contract will be our first item.
I can. We do have Sheriff Kelly here tonight. If he would like to say a few words before we approve the contract.
Evening Sheriff.
Have me again. Last time I said we were working on it, and I think we came to what I call the palatable resolution with our county board. Still actually not what I requested, but we got the second best option in my opinion, so. Very grateful for your patience. I know it ruffled some feathers as expected, I knew it would. And if you watched the county board meeting, it told them so, and they did dampen some of our relationships with five towns in our county, and I didn't appreciate it, but. We'll get that back. I'll just stand for any questions before you take a vote on that.
Thanks for the support up there, myself and a couple of our other city staff, along with other community representatives during the board meeting. And there was some frustrations going on, but we appreciated the sheriff's office coming through and sharing our our concerns and ensuring that we, that people knew that we were continuing to push that part. And that was important, so. Any questions regarding the contract?
No, I'll move approval for the G C S O policing contract.
One second.
No motion in a second. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Discussion. Either way, it's Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David is aye. A few weeks, we got through. We're going to move on to our resolution twenty four thirty five, which is approving the preliminary budget. We all got some paperwork and our emails regarding those numbers and what that's looking like.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, at our last work session, we worked through kind of by department what the twenty twenty five levy and budget looks like. Obviously, we know, we've been talking about some increases that we're going to have, such as public safety on the policing contract. If it's the only increase, we're looking at increase from ambulance service as well. In addition to that, city council recently implemented a wage study, which obviously impacts the budget. So that was a two step increase, and so part of that took place in twenty twenty four, and then part of that will take place in twenty twenty five. And so that's the majority of the increase that we're seeing. Overall, with those increases and where we're seeing cost increase, I'm very happy with our department heads. I challenge them all to get creative with capital equipment purchases and seeing how we can spread projects out over multiple years, and they all met that challenge. Overall, we don't have many major projects in twenty twenty five, and so we're able to keep the levy increase at a five point five seven percent increase, which when we look at levy increases, that doesn't necessarily mean a bad thing. As communities grow, our levy should increase higher as compared to a family's grocery bill. As your family increases, your grocery bill will increase, and so as we are adding people and households, our levy and our budget should be increasing as well. So what that means is our tax capacity is increasing, and so what we try to do each year is we try to raise the levy with the same rate as what our tax capacity is increasing. And so I do want to make a slight adjustment. I know in the packet, I did have Homestead County's twenty twenty five tax capacities available. I have those now, and so in the packet, it says that we're looking at about a tax rate of about eighty two point zero five percent. That's actually going to be closer to eighty one point five six percent because we were able to add about thirty thousand dollars in tax capacity in Homestead County with some of the new builds that we have going on there. And so while we're looking at what that means, just for every hundred thousand dollars in residential valuation, it's about a seven point six one, seven dollars and sixty one cents tax increase for the year. So for instance, if we just take an average four hundred thousand dollar house, we're looking at their yearly taxes going up to about thirty dollars. And so again, this is a preliminary levy, and so once we set the preliminary levy, we cannot increase that for the rest of the year. And so typically, we set our preliminary levy a little bit high because we don't have project quotes and things like that. Insurance premium rates, we're still waiting on that, and so we estimate high because we can't raise this number once we set it this evening. But then, once we get those numbers in in October and November, and we're able to get solid quotes for projects, then we can bring that number down and we can decrease it. So the number we're setting tonight is just the highest that the tax levy could be for twenty twenty five, and then we can cut and we can make the budget and levy more lean prior to the final tax levy in December.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the information that our administrator shared? Just to reiterate to the public as well, this, the numbers that we are discussing right now are the highest that we can do right now. We still have the opportunity to litter away at the final budget numbers. We're sitting well, so that's, that's a good reason. Any questions?
I'll move resolution twenty four thirty five.
A motion in a second to approve resolution twenty four thirty five. And of course, as always, if there's members of the public that are listening online and you have questions, please feel free to reach out to City Hall to get your questions answered. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David will be aye. Which moves us right into our next resolution twenty four dash thirty six, which is approving the preliminary level.
I'll move approval for resolution twenty four thirty six, approving the preliminary levy.
One second.
A motion in a second to approve the levy. So with these numbers again, once we finalize these, our budget numbers cannot decrease. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David will be aye. Thank you, staff, for your work. And on this, and I would also like to thank our department heads too for their work on this budget for next year that really crunches the other rest, so thank you for that. We are going to be looking at a chicken permit for the scripture.
So in your packet, you had a request for a chicken permit. It's located down at Safer Court. Based on the application received, going through the ordinance, she's in compliance with all the proposed regulations. She plans to have three hens. She included a waste plan for that. She also included a site plan for where it's going to be located. Her property on the south side of Safer Court. What's up to a city drainage ditch, so she actually has additional space behind her house, so she meets all the setbacks from other principal buildings of her neighbors. So she is in line with everything. Of course, the approval of the permit is subject to a final inspection by the city, so we'll take a look at it when she gets the actual assembled, but just make sure she put it where she said she was going to, so.
I'll move approval of the proposed permit for chickens.
One second.
A motion in a second for the chicken permit. Who are going to get their inspection this week?
I think I am the resident chicken inspector going forward, so I'll get the honor.
We have motion in a second for the permit. Any others discussion, excuse me, otherwise Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David is aye. We're going to have a request to reduce the WAC and SAC fees.
Hi, well, Mr. Mayor. So throughout the years, as we meet with different developers, one common theme that we hear is how high are WAC and SAC fees are, what those means there is our water access charge and sewer access charge. Essentially, developers pay this to be able to expand both of those utilities and connect to our main systems. And in the packet, I included what our area cities charge for WAC and SAC, and as you can see, we are significantly higher. Looking back, this was implemented years ago because we were lower than everybody else, and so council hadn't acted an automatic seven percent increase each year, and I think that's where we, it ballooned to be high, especially for the SAC fees. And so as we are continuing to grow and work with developers, I am asking council to look at these fees to bring them down more in line to our area cities so that we can essentially still have developers on the Pine Island and not look at other communities over Pine Island. So these fees are usually charged on the developable acreage when we have a development. And so I do have to hand out a resolution before you on the last page would be where we could have the WAC and SAC change. I honestly don't have a recommendation for you other than the fees that are listed for surrounding cities. I leave that up to council, and if you want to reduce them, it would make sense to keep them all the same. I can answer more questions if council has.
We're looking at.
Just a significant decrease if we were to go down more in line with the others.
I didn't quite hear that.
It says significant decrease if we go down in line with the others.
It is. It would make our developments more competitive, just because it would be more in line. Typically, developers pass these costs on to people who buy the lots, and so I know Pine Island lots seem to be a little bit higher than area communities, so this would help bring our lots down as well. It doesn't seem to be affecting lots. Lots are still selling fairly quickly. I just got word today that it sounds like ten thirty second is selling out really well. However, we want to continue that growth and we want to continue to bring developers to our area.
There any engineering methodology, any true cost to any of this, or I mean, instead of just throwing a throw a number in the air?
Yeah, good question. So we have council, the purpose of the SAC fees are to put upon some maintenance and extension of infrastructure, so it's hard to put a number on that because a lot of times the developers are paying for the extension but I think just knowing like years ago, the SAC fee was increased by that percentage because just we knew something had to be done with it. There should be some cost.
So we could have done that as utility committee, huh?
It was done a while ago. Quite, we had to dig back quite a few years.
Okay. We used to waive, isn't this, we used to waive these for a while, couldn't we? I remember voting on that.
So that was the individual hookup fees. So in addition to this, when someone builds a house in Pine Island, they pay individual hookup costs to actually connect their house to the system.
Got it.
And so Pine Island did waive those fees to encourage people to buy lots in Pine Island, and I believe we had waived those for about five or six years. Yeah, in the late eighteen twenties.
So are you looking for a specific number that council would recommend, or is this something that we can have with utilities, many of city staff? Do some math and look at what would be a reasonable reduction and pull that out there.
Do we need action, or do we need action on this for the pending development agreement?
I mean, we do have pending developments. I think a lot of it has, the cost of the development has changed on what our fees are and are being incorporated, what the developer can do with their property. That's not the only developer, obviously. That's brought into our attention how high our fees are with our competitors or area cities, not competitors. And so that's, that's when staff started actually looking at and comparing to neighboring cities and realizing how high they are compared to them.
Eric, I'm going to say in sort of my, my words, what Craig says is exactly right. These, these fees, which are different than some of these, these fees are supposed to recover a certain basket of costs the city incurs, but as Craig rightly points out, exactly what that basket of costs is is subject to some fate. There isn't some bright line rule about you include this and you don't include that. And in the case of the city, it's got some future wastewater treatment plant, water plant, water well needs on the road, identifying exactly what that basket of costs is, and the future is, let's be honest, not, it's not possible to do it with great accuracy. So that, that's reality. We're supposed to aim for cost, but what exactly that basket of costs is, is not something we put our finger on. And reality is that what you see in front of you, I'm glad staff put this in front of you, what you see is that cities look at what each other do. I mean, that, that is the reality. It's not strictly what the statute encourages us to do, but that is what most cities do, and you'll see that in the case of Stewartville and Cassin. These are two thousand dollars across the board, shared among a couple of cities. Clearly, it's just a reflection of being competitive with your neighbors, right? So that's reality. I'm not going to tell you that I'm opposed to you doing it that way. I would love it. We could say to the committee or to Craig, go and figure out what the costs are and figure out what these numbers are. But I think that exercise is just super difficult.
Yeah.
So that, that's, that's my two cents on that.
And tell me again, these fees are charged on a development per developable acre?
Correct.
What do you recommend maybe set at? Keep them there, wait.
I mean, I think anything between the two thousand dollars, which would be competitive enough to other cities our size, up to the two thousand nine hundred sixty, which we have for our WAC and Storm right now. I think the sewer is especially what, what needs to come down. I think it makes sense to make all the fees the same amount.
All right, there's, and there's no reason a sewer would be more than a water, I'm just.
Right.
It's going to be more expensive to maintain actually, but I think as you can see, the the fees are set at the same rate, so. But yeah, I would agree with this, but we're between two thousand and twenty five.
What do we say about twenty five hundred across the board?
For all three.
For all three, like each is at twenty five hundred? I mean, that's a reasonable between that amount and.
That'll bring the SAC fee down immensely.
Yeah. And if there's one cost more than the other, I mean, some, that does happen. You usually recoup it with another one being a little bit higher.
That recommendation, I'd like to make, or any other discussion?
We're discussing, David, we're discussing.
Discussion.
Pushy, pushy.
No, and that's, and this is a very good, very good topic to address and look at those numbers and Elizabeth reiterated, we're still seeing that development coming in town, so.
And definitely per acre is a lot, so. I think we're definitely getting at least what we need.
I would like to see that twenty, I would like to see that twenty two or twenty five.
Yeah.
So I'll go ahead and recommend reduce reduced fee for all of them, set at twenty five hundred dollars for each of them.
That's a motion.
Yes, a motion.
Yeah, one second that.
We have a motion in a second to look at taking our WAC fee. Is any other discussion?
Do we want to look at adjusting the percentage of increase annually? Or is that for another discussion?
I think right now we can leave them at the twenty five hundred, I mean, we can kind of, that's a discussion that we can have before we set the twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Okay.
Will you remind us of, you'll remind us of that? Sorry, did I?
No, I stepped on a new.
No, I just, you don't let us forget that when we go to discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, Mayor, I was going to say, this is just not, this is legal advice at all, but just an observation. The concern I have that I've seen in some cities that have a built in automatic indicator for some of these fees, the result of doing that is if you stop looking at those fees, right?
Essentially what happened now.
I think happened to.
And you know, what we don't want to do, but I can call up the sheriff here, but I mean, you don't want to have a time come where you move to a cost based system with your contracts with your cities, in the case of the county and policing services, or in the case of having to rebuild the wastewater plant, you don't want to have to suddenly make a giant increase from twenty five hundred to seventy three hundred dollars on SAC. So I like the idea that you're sort of forced to look at this every year, want to make sure that you're sort of keeping up. So now I've probably made an argument that staff doesn't love because it makes it a little bit more complicated.
Yeah.
The scheduling each year rather than just a built in increase, but that's the problem. You know, auto.
Probably shouldn't be on a utility committee conversation right first anyway.
Since it's a service we can run.
Any other thoughts or questions, council? Thank you, staff, for looking into that. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David will be aye. We're going to look at a request to approve the remote work policy.
This is an exciting policy. So back in twenty twenty, rewind a little bit to COVID, and with all the funds that the city received, we were able to upgrade staff to laptops and essentially we moved all of our systems to cloud based system so that we could offer remote work to our employees and no one wanted to work from home. So it kind of fell to the wayside, our staff like coming into the office. That has changed now where we have had some staff inquire about it in the working schedule. And so we revisited it. I pulled the L N C model, remote work policy, and retrofitted it to our cities, like the policy that you see before you, but essentially just set guidelines and expectations for both the employee and the employer. Essentially, an employee would request it to their supervisor, and ultimately it would be left up to me and team with the supervisor and employee and set a schedule over expectations. So there's a clear roadmap of what that employee will be doing, what their schedule would look like. Obviously, work comes first and employees or customers come first, and so this, the only way an employee would be able to work from home is if it does not disrupt their normal operations, and so for vacations, things like that, people will have to work from office. But those are things that can work around now that we have the policy held by employees.
This is exciting.
One question I haven't heard, like, how do you handle, do you have employees that could use their phone calls or something like that?
Yeah, so when we upgraded our phone system last year, I believe, essentially, we upgraded to a system that has an app, and so I know Stephen and I have been using it. And so we can forward our desk phones to this app, and our app works exactly how our desk phones do. So I can answer any phone call that brings to my desk through this app, and so we have that where we have employees from home where they can use their cell phone. But it actually, when they make calls through that app, it says that the call is coming from City Hall, so.
Pretty common in the workplace right now, in the professional world. Seems like reading through it, there's enough controls, if something goes upside down, you can turn them back.
That's fair.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the remote work policy.
I'll second.
Second. We see the diagram at the desk. So are you, are you having significant requests on that, or is it just kind of like?
Well, all four of us in the office.
I was just going to say, it must be the new people and people that live on the town.
No.
So we've just had some loose conversations, and we've always talked about it, but really, now that we, we have had some new people in the office, we've been talking always that we can redo some workflows and look at job responsibilities. It's really made us look at how we back each other up in our positions and just how we can utilize new flows of information, and as we try to go paperless, this, this just kind of is part of all of that conversation. So as you know, I've been huge in the employee retention and offering a positive work culture for our employees, and I think this is just another added benefit that we can add to that.
We have a motion in a second, council. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Vincent Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
And David is. We are looking, very looking forward to the next legislative session. Resolution twenty four thirty seven is approving the North Number Secretary's Lobbying Contract.
Of course, time is a charm. So two years ago, two years ago, we did receive ten million dollars from the state legislature to go towards the design of our joint sanitary district that we've been working on since twenty twenty. The group is looking to head back to the Capitol this year to look for the remainder of that funding. And so this would allow us to continue to work with the same lobbyist firm that we have been working with, which is Winter Out and Weinstein. They've done a fantastic job working with us. They have a really good relationship with Prairie Island Indian Community, which also helped us lobby on the venture, and so this is our request to continue working with them. I'll also have that, so the fees have been exactly the same, so they haven't raised their fees from session to session. So the fees have stayed exactly the same year to year.
I'll move approval for resolution twenty four thirty seven, approving the lobbying contract.
One second.
A motion in a second. Got it. Head to law, please. So. Any other comments, questions? Pretty straightforward, so we appreciate the partnerships that we've developed with projects, so that's something that's been very valuable to us.
I do have a quick question on the Prairie Island side of things. Are they now? I do have a quick question on the Prairie Island side of things, are they now part of the lobbyists? Kickin', or how does that work?
No, so the four communities who are part of the sanitary district, we divide that four ways. Um, Prairie Island has their own lobbyists that they that they usually work closely with, um, so they use a firm, and then they also have, uh, staff number, I don't want to speak on behalf of Prairie Island, but I think I got that right. Um, so they have their own government liaisons that, uh, that will work with our lobbyists, but, uh, I know like last year, um, like Johnson, he attended most of our meetings with us. And so, um, we were just able to build a very good connection, um, as they attended meetings with, um, state senators.
Okay, that's, yeah, just wanted to clarify and make sure, thanks.
Okay, uh, yeah, we have a motion a second, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David with, uh. Who was us to add to item eight, which is a discussion, uh, Councilman Johnson's for.
So I, uh, I have relocated outside of the city limits. Um, and we had an opportunity to come up that, uh, we jumped on, so I, uh, my last meet, this will be my last meeting. So it's my, uh, almost my eleventh year on the council. I've been in town for twenty-four years, put two kids through the, the school system, um. Just like to say thank the people who elected me three times, hopefully I. Did a good job for you. And that's. Wasn't easy, but it it's something I had to do.
We'll have a more formal acknowledgement coming up, but, uh. I would like to just publicly thank the councilman this time, as you said, it's been about eleven years. This is definitely not an easy, easy role to play if people don't step into this role. For being fortunate in small communities, and you end up taking a lot more than you expected when you step into the seat, and. Mr. Johnson's showing himself to be a very reliable council member, uh. Tending his committees, making connections, and one thing I've always appreciated about him is he's always been very cool, calm, collected up here, and that's something that we needed, and. I I was truly saddened here when that decision was made, and I could not be more pleased to, uh, say that I've. I've counted a privilege to serve with him, so I want to say thank you as well.
Appreciate it.
So, yeah, we'll have some, some things to worry about here. That we have to accept this. Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Council, first of all, uh, congratulations, council members, for a really good service here, um, yeah, so unfortunately I've had this come upon a couple of communities, um. So I happened to have read the statute, uh, prior to tonight, um, essentially, um, yes, we'll have to ask the council member to put, uh, something right, I don't know if it's required. It's sort of practically required that we ask to do that right now, have the council going on it right now, but after the meeting, if we put it right, the council can accept that the next meeting, that would be the act that creates the vacancy on the council. And then sort of regardless, and maybe we can work out the details now right here, so here now, but, uh, we'll either have to, uh, appoint, uh, someone to fill the seat temporarily. Or we'll need to appoint somebody to fill the seat through its remaining term, that will depend on some things that we can talk about separately, but there will, there will need to be an appointment. Uh, to fill the vacancy at some point here in the next, uh, month or two, uh, so we'll get going, that's sort of figuring out, but that's in the board. So I I'd need it to counsel if you want to, that you sign something right now, you do that as opposed to, you know, you don't need to, you don't need as far as.
So no action until we have something in there.
Yeah.
Well, Jason.
I want.
We'll keep going, then let's jump into our planning commission, which is the resolution twenty-four dash thirty-eight, final, final.
Yep, so back in July, I believe, um, council approved a preliminary plat, um. For Seth Free's Construction LLC, um, to move forward up on the Walters property, um. Along with that plat, you also approved a land use map alteration as well as a rezone, um, so we kind of laid all the building blocks for this final plat. The final plat was submitted, it went in front of the planning commission back in August, they, um, recommended approval following a public hearing. Um, along with their approval, we kind of had a whole laundry list of administrative and engineering. Requirements that they satisfy, um, I would say they have partially satisfied both the administrative and the engineering, um, there are still a few. Uh, Ts to cross and Is to dot, um, I believe on the engineering side, um, Craig can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are still wait. We have received most of the technical reports, um, I know we're waiting for final approval from the county, um, for an access permit off of County Route eleven. I believe WSC and maybe the city have a meeting with the county tomorrow, um, to discuss that, um. It's kind of up to council how you'd like to proceed, if you'd like to approve the plat pending, um, the approval from the county. On the administrative side of things, um, Kenny and Graven did issue a plat opinion. There were some hiccups in the title work, um, the title work that was provided by, um, Mr. Freeze. Uh, still included the Walters as title owners of the property, um. We requested, now that Seth has purchased the property, uh, and updated title reflecting his sole ownership. Um, we have not yet received that at this point, um, we asked for a copy of the title deed or something that was signed saying he is the owner, we just haven't gotten it yet. Um, I'm confident that we will, um, but it's kind of up to you as well as, uh, Bob, how comfortable you are. Moving forward without those documents in hand. That's kind of where I'm at, we have most of it, however, um, there are a few technical pieces that we are still waiting on.
I have a question. For Craig. Is there no sidewalks in this development?
I also have questions about a walking path to it.
Yeah.
I know.
Yep.
Right, this won't be the first development off of a high-traffic, high-speed road, and I'm pretty sure in the last eight years I've said never. On another one, you know, that creates a debacle for.
Right.
Um, people getting to and from, so that's a sticking point for me. I know some of that land is ours, but.
I know, uh, one thing we discussed, because there are not sidewalks, um, on Main Street. Down, um, that way, north, I should say, up that way, however, we did talk about, um, the county will be, uh, redoing, um, their road there. And we did talk about making some improvements on Third Avenue, and at that point, we talked about putting, connecting it to sidewalks on Third Avenue. So then that would bring them, um, to the park essentially, and then there's a trail from Collins Park, and so we did say that, uh, that would probably be.
The safest route.
The safest and the quickest route is to connect, um, this whole property where the city is purchasing, and then where Mr. Freeze is purchased. Um, and connect that through Third Avenue and bring it, the connectivity to Collins Park.
We're proposing. We're gonna do work on Third Avenue?
No, but we would have that sidewalk there.
Okay.
Eventually.
Yeah. Okay. So I have questions about eventually, but.
Yeah, so as long as they put the sidewalks in the development, we'll be able to connect up then after that.
So I did a lot of the, yes, there's a lot planned. All right, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's part of the discussion, like with the age family initiative, and being aware of that, and, uh, because that's been a, a point of discussion going north on Main Street. We have wide shoulders, thank goodness, for people to walk, especially when we're under the clinic. But we're looking to add that, that traffic. Hopefully to bring that up, but get that included in future plans, so.
Yeah, we just need to be vigilant moving forward.
So, as Stephen was saying, we can look at options for, uh, moving forward with this, if we wanted to approve. As it's written, contingent on them receiving that paperwork, um, in hand at City Hall. Is an option for, maybe like to. Use a tie.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-four thirty-eight, provided. Developer can meet all those requirements.
Second.
And a second. Mayor. Yes, sir. I can just say, um, you know, the resolution that, uh, staff has put in front of you, uh, which, uh, now is, uh, up for voting, um, just, just to be clear, the conditions in it all. Most of them do properly indicate that we, the city, wouldn't release the actual Mylar version of this thing, we're ordering it to the county until all these things are done. So when you hold the Mylar like that, that's what this says, I mean, you're kind of holding the keys to the whole thing at that point, so we do have a lot of, uh, security here as far as making sure these things are. Second, any other discussion? Who is, Vernon?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
And David is, uh. Takes us to the request to approve the development agreement for Plan B.
Uh, my preamble is all the same, so I can pass it off to Craig if he wants to go into depth on the developer group.
Sure, yeah, so this is a standard development agreement that includes other developments within the city, uh, so it talks about, um, entrances, warranties. Letter of credit, this of that sort, so, uh, we, we did pass this one on to Seth Freeze, the developer, and the engineer, to review. And, uh, they didn't, did not provide any comments back, uh, to us, they didn't provide some of the information here, such as the, uh, the cost of the building, which is fully through, so they could be required to provide a, a letter of credit. Twenty-five percent of that total amount, um, so, uh, so that's included in the development agreement. Then we turn the page, uh, it's in the Article three, I guess. Uh, so it's the one that all highlighted, I just, I'll let you exactly know tonight, that we, uh, have SAC fees and stormwater subsidies. Um, so if you're comfortable with that, we would plug in that twenty-five, most of the development here, um, in that, uh, which in this development, there are four point three from the development. So we, that would be the total for each of those items. One item I don't know about section two point three, uh, so our access fee, um, because the stormwater pond that is going to be constructed as part of this development. Will be expanded, uh, to, in the stormwater for the city facilities, uh, as the city develops a property to the east. We felt it was reasonable to, uh, decrease the amount of the stormwater access fee by half, so, uh, that is what is included as well, again, because the developer. Elder will be constructing somewhat infrastructure for the city, so, uh, did want to point that out because it is an improvement of the previous improvements. But again, Seth, it's a, it's a reasonably.
So are we gonna be paying for rework? When we get to that point?
Um, the way that it would be set up is it would be extended, so, uh, you wanted to limit the amount of rework out, um, and just extend it. So that's why that the double acreage, um, we've gone to a real is two point sixteen acres and so forth.
Well, Elizabeth, refresh my memory, when there's money in lieu of park space, does that go somewhere into a park safekeeping for upgrades, enhancements, I mean, this thing's close to Collins, right?
So. Yeah, that's correct, and so, uh, just to refresh your memory, we would use that money directly for, so that's where the connectivity down Third Street would come into play. Is because they are paying the fee in lieu of park space, and we would use that to connect it to our trail system directly, so.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll move approval for the development agreement for Plan B.
A second, that motion.
With a motion a second to approve the development agreement, Plan B. Discussion comments, there's Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
All right.
Jason.
Hi.
David will be. And we'll move into Public Works and Engineering, and our first item is a request to replace the shop entrance gate, which has become a need, I don't.
Yeah, so the, the gate at the. The shop is in bad shape, the gate itself and electronics running, you can't even get parts for it anymore. I don't think even the emergency stop works anymore, so. It it's time, uh, we got three quotes, uh, they're all pretty close, uh, Thompson Door coming lowest at, uh. Fourteen-six-fifty. And the next one was from Apex, from fourteen-six-six-two, and American Fence at fourteen-eight-eight-nine. So.
Being comfortable with Thompson's?
Yeah, they, they're a good outfit, and they do all our door maintenance.
Okay.
Um, on our overhead doors, so we're real comfortable and they treat us pretty good, so.
I'll make the motion to accept Thompson's.
Second.
That's a motion in a second. Yeah, it's a little intimidating sitting down there waiting for the gate to open, like it's halfway.
Go fast.
Thank, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would like to add that this is coming out of regularly budgeted dollars too, so typically for, um, building maintenance, we don't have to bring that before council, however. Um, one of the bathroom facilities that we're going to be building at the shop that got moved to early twenty-twenty-five, so that freed up some, um, maintenance dollars in twenty-twenty-four. So that's why we wanted to bring it before you is because, um, those funds are being reallocated.
Motion in a second, Vernon.
All right.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David will be. Do they have a estimated time, thankfully? In this three guys? I, I just. All right, let's go on to item B, some good news, including some science purchases for Second, Second Street, Main Street, intersection.
Yes, so you have two handouts before you, the first is a quote from safety signs, and it is for, um, a new flashing system. On the corner, it would be Second Street South and Main Street, so the corner at the bank, and, uh, this quote is for twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, um. This is a specialized piece of equipment because, one, we have power issues, because where our current, um, flashing signs are, we don't have power, they're solar. And so most systems that we could find were run off power, and so it's very difficult to find a system that, um, that did not need that. Um, once we got the quote, we approached the county to see if they would be willing to cost share with us, uh, they challenged us to find some additional funding. And so, um, Mr. Robertson applied for a grant through Livwell, um, it's through Good Hee County, but it is state funds that are just funneled through the county. Uh, and we were granted six thousand dollars towards that, uh, so then we went back to the county again and said we got a six thousand dollar grant, would you cost share? The remaining dollars that went before the county board today, and they did approve that, um, so they will be, um, they're willing to split the difference after the grant is applied. So before you is the quote, um, to approve, this would be, um, just coming out of a fund balance, this would not be coming out of budgeted funds, I'm comfortable with that. Um, we've had a lot of, uh, safety issues at that intersection, I think this is a need for public safety. And then also before you is the agreement with the Livwell to, um, receive the six thousand dollars, it's pretty straightforward. Um, it essentially states that it's reimbursement, the city will be supplying, um, receipts to be reimbursed, and that will be, uh, writing a article and sharing pictures with them on what, uh, what, uh. System does in our community.
Robert, should you write that grant?
He did it one hundred percent on his own.
Oh.
That's exciting.
They wrote it for you?
The truth be told. I would also like to add that at some point, we will have to enter into an agreement with the county due to the cost sharing. I would also like to add that at some point, we will have to enter into an agreement with the county due to the cost sharing. And we have a verbal agreement that the county will cost share. However, then the city will be responsible for all future maintenance, things like that. And which is all we are looking for anyways. But that agreement will at some point be in front of you, so.
Will we get the agreement in writing before we order twenty-seven thousand two fifty?
I think it's.
I don't want to say I don't trust the.
So the grand dollars are only available through October. We we have to order the system by October fifteenth to receive the grand dollars.
Okay.
I'm comfortable either way. I think I think it's a system, so our system is. I think y'all know it doesn't work. The batteries frequently go out on it. It's an old system that we can't get parts for anymore. And now that school started back up, that intersection really, really needs some help. I'm of approval of the purchase of new safety light for Second Street.
Excellent.
And the acceptance of the.
You like separate items?
Yeah, is it?
Or does it matter?
Does it have to be? I don't think it matters, but if you want to do it separate, you can. Okay, and the acceptance of the six thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion, a second for the whole kit here, correct? If I heard correctly.
Can we advertise this is happening?
And I will say thank you to the county board for stepping up to this move forward. How long before they'll be able?
We should have an employee recognition for Todd.
Sam's been.
Yeah, that quarter's been sore.
Oh, yeah.
I think so, we should bring it up on Facebook.
Yeah.
Well, I was just saying, we should do an employee recognition for Todd and we can post it all over. He got us these grand dollars to give us a wonderful new flashing light.
And this move by the age friendly group. So Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Aye. Staff will work. We're going to Eagle. Nothing more than that, Seth. Claims.
Move claims.
Second.
Motion, a second, approve claims. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
David will be eye, that's going to Department's reports. Elizabeth, anything?
No, everything's in my report. Yeah. We've been busy. I'm I'm looking forward to the 9/11 being passed, I'll save a lot of time. Yeah.
City participated last month, the national made out. So again, I'll hopefully thank the base group for able to do a rundown and a review of that. And we'll get making some tweaks going into next year. So thank you to the volunteer that took that as well. Our national, or nine eleven service. That was a good turnout, thank you for the heat that we had as well. Rachel. Go part walk yet on Sunday?
Yeah, that was kind of neat to see so many people. I'm a part of the age friendly group. So that organization that Marie had done for that walk was fantastic. I think we had thirty-five people show up, which was like ten more than we were expecting, so excellent news. Per the library, as you can see in my report, we had a author talk last night on the man who came up with how to. Purify uranium for the atom, for the bombs in World War Two. Fascinating talk. We've got the book at the library, it's called Wilhelm's Way. I encourage anyone who can to read that and maybe to check out. I can, I'll be posting links to the author's schedule for the rest of the tour because it's going through south. I think twenty-seven libraries in the Selco region are having her fantastic speaker. My biggest news, of course, is our pollinator garden in the front yard of the library. That's going gangbusters. We've got it completely mulched. Underneath the mulch is a layer of cardboard to kind of kill all those grasses and weeds that are already there. And my master gardener that I've been working with, her name is Kim Olson, she's out of Cannon Falls. She's planted a shrub tree at no one on Facebook guests. So I will let you all know that it is a pussy willow. So look forward to seeing those cute little pussy willow blossoms in the front of the library early spring. We'll be planting everything else. Probably in April or May. With that, I have applied for a couple of different grants, one of which is through Wild Green Futures. The game Angry Birds has all fifty mini grants that they've put together through this organization. Heidi happened to see it on Facebook and she said, hey, apply for this. So I applied for it yesterday. We'll find out next week if we get that. And I'm looking for that to kind of fund the stuff that's already happened this fall. And then in the spring, we'll also be, oh, I'm putting together a grant right now through legacy funding through Selco. And that can be up to seven thousand dollars and that will include a peace poll, hopefully all the rest of the plants, a bunch of different programming. So keep an eye on our website and other information here as that goes forward. Book about Wellsby partnering with the school eco club, so they're going to be helping out with that too. We're changing the format of Books and Brews starting this coming month. I've done it as a genre thing in the past, so we're kind of look at a different genre each month. Going forward, we're going to try to get more people to attend by just having it as a come and talk about the books that you're reading. Have a beer, bring your fiber or other crafts that you're working on. And we're just kind of get together and have kind of like a book talk that whatever you're reading, let us know. Also, Books and Brews next month, October eleventh is our next spelling bee. So I would love to see everyone there to come sip and spell. We had twenty-seven people in February last year. I'd love to top that because April was right before the garage sale weekend. And we had two people because that was the last nice day before that crap-tastic weather weekend. So come and visit us. Any questions for me otherwise?
Thank you.
It's gonna be super fantastic.
It is weird not having the tree there because there's a lot more visual visual there, but it is, I'm looking forward to what it's going to be.
Yeah, and I also got a donation from the Good Hugh County Soil Conservation. They provide trays of plants. So if anyone needs a pollinator tray, I think you get sixty plants for seventy bucks or something to that effect. Or maybe, no, it's thirty-six plants for seventy dollars. They're donating a tray for us. So yeah, we'll be using a bunch of them in that, in our garden. And then if there's other things around the city, maybe we'll be putting them in parks and that kind of stuff too, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
You know, Todd will.
I did not tell Todd.
So if you noticed, we got some of our milling overlay done around the school, looks really nice. I want to thank Santa Gravel for working with me on that, getting that done before school. And Craig helped me a little bit here too. So trailer court, we're hoping to have wrapped up this week, so. It's coming, so. And.
So quick question.
Right, we got our new street sweeper.
What was, what was the issue with one of the roads there by the trailer court? They said it had to be. It was something about, oh, the gravy that had to be done on it or something?
Yeah, there's, there's some, they had a couple saw spots and we took out the cul-de-sac on the end of the one street.
Okay, that.
And we actually found a vault. We didn't know we had. So. But.
Awesome.
Yeah, so and then, but yes, we did purchase or get our street sweeper here last week, so. And they boys have been out working. It's gonna be a great piece of machinery for us.
It's making a difference.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be.
I had to thank Sam, who took me down there and showed me that. She, and that was, that was fun.
And then also we got our canoe launch moved out at the pit. You guys want to go out and look at that, really turned out nice, so.
Yeah, Floyd, I don't know if you guys have met Floyd yet, out there leading that project. And they, they've been so thus far, very, very hopeful partners to the city once of this stuff. It's, they do some boulders for us.
So I've been out there a long time, it still goes past the lift station? No. Now it's moved towards, comes along the river view and goes towards the bridge. It's on that end of, by the bridge.
Those are around the spawn.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great. Mine operation wanted a center access from their operation.
Sure.
So there's a, the first access essentially would be down there to the launch. Part of that agreement with all of that is that we have so. They exceeded expectations. So they don't, uh, go to the launch, they put rocks around the pond, just so they'll be able to learn from that.
Thanks. Awesome.
They're helping out with some signage, just to make sure.
Thank you guys for maintaining.
It's gonna be nice.
I'm not off here that the river's not too low and not too high, we can actually use it, so.
Actually, every river's just perfect right now, it's, so.
And there's been a lot of people canoeing or not canoeing, fishing there when I'm making an appointment. So people are using.
So actually, there's no fishing in the pond, so. River only.
They're back to.
We're putting signs up because the company still owns the pond. They don't want any fishing or swimming. They've actually kicked a couple kids out already, so.
Go fish the river.
I said I would have been there too, so.
Yeah. Guy, remember sitting in the back over there? He stepped up and he's gonna be serving on the EDA board, so thank you so much for coming on tonight. Fire department's not here, Sheriff's Office, we did our thing. Anything else for the good of the org, otherwise Jason, I see your last meeting.
No. Good, move that way.
I was gonna say, I knew better last.
That's okay.
Nikki Lado from Prairie Island Indian Community. I was just wanted to let the community know that we are holding a expungement clinic on the twenty-fourth. So people can come down to the community center and we'll be having, it's with the Attorney General's office. And they're gonna be coming down and if anyone has some minor felonies and. Let's misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors and minor felonies, they can come and get their records expunged if they, if they qualify. It also helps because it takes away the three hundred dollar court and paper filing fees if you have. And they will, you come in, you fill out a, an application and then they go over your record. You'll be with one of the attorneys, Attorney General's office. And they will go through your record and they will help get that expunged. If you have a warrant, they will let you know that you have a warrant. They won't arrest you on site, but they will, they will help you find ways to get that removed or pay whatever fees and things you need to do. And I think it's just a good opportunity to let people know that because it helps with employment and also housing. And so if you want to come down, and even if anything's been discharged, it's still on your record. So if you have any, if anyone has any issues that they need to have checked or whatever, you can go to the website. Or you can also come down and, and we have a pre-registration. I can send you the information for that, or you can come in in person and do it as well. And it'll be from September twenty-fourth from ten until five p.m.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Anything else, council, as I was saying, thank you, Jason.
Make the motion.
I'm not very excited, but.
Second.
Motion, a second. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
David is eye, thank you, everybody.